EDA, at this time, there's been no resolution on the price or sale of the piece of property in either way, so at this time, we can find a negotiated price or something other, whether it's renegotiations with the EDA by Mr. Stoll, or the EDA coming up, and the city coming into some type of agreement, it's gonna have to, it's off until a certain time till we can get it done. Right now, there's just no give and take on this portion of it at this time, until we can sit down and talk some more. Is there anybody else that would like to mention anything?
Well, I know Ron wants to get this thing going, but the negotiation with the EDA was...
A non-negotiation.
Non-negotiation, so they want to come up with a Plan B, and then we'll go from there.
And that's what, that's, you know, they have the authority to do that, so, and we try to negotiate in every way we can, so we'll continue to work on it, see if we can get this done and move forward. Any other discussion with the council? If not, Chair will take a motion to close the special city council meeting.
So moved.
Adjourn.
So adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by John. All's in favor?
Aye.
Close. Special city council meeting is adjourned. Okay. It is now 6:35, and at this time, we will open the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, December the 19th. Roll call.
Councilmember Abidi?
Present.
Althoff?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Mattson? Is not present at the moment. McCusker?
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All those here, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Mike. All's in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. That moves us on to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi there, Annie Deckert, 13467 212th Avenue Northwest, Elk River, Minnesota. It's on the agenda, I just would like clarification for us and the folks in the audience, is the project still being talked about on that?
It won't be talked about tonight, because we don't have anything, we can really go forward with it this time.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl Bauer, 3191364th Avenue, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. I'm here tonight to address the city council about my opinion on the expansion of the winery.
I'm not a public speaker, and this is very uncomfortable for me, so bear with me as I address you. It's my understanding that the winery has asked to purchase the property for as low as $1, and I'm here to say why I feel like the city should take into careful consideration the deal that they decide to negotiate with Mr. Stoll. My husband and I have owned and operated the caravan motel in town since 1999. We are a small family-owned business and pride ourselves on offering clean, safe accommodations to visiting guests to our community. In 2001, we were annexed into the city by no choice of our own. This annexation costed our business more than $106,000, not including the interest that we have incurred on this. We were given no relief from the city to do this, and we, along with other businesses, are still paying for our assessments today, so I'm sure you can understand why it's hard for us to see another business trying to get something for nothing from the city. On top of all this, since the year we hooked up to City Sewer and Water, we have paid the city more than $51,000 in sewer and water bills, and have paid out more than $167,000 in taxes. If we choose to have our business in Cannon Falls, we have to pay all this out of our own pockets without help from the city taxpayers. Our annual water bill in 2005, soon after the annexation, was $2,078, and this year, it's at $4,873. And I can't help but feel that by negotiating a fair price for the city property, maybe something could be done that would benefit the entire city, like maybe lower water bills for everybody. Now, Mr. Stoll offers to the city that the winery business will benefit all the other local businesses with its more than 100,000 annual visitors that it attracts to Cannon Falls, and I question the sincerity of this statement, and this is why. This spring, it was brought to my attention by one of my customers that the winery did not include either of the two local lodging establishments on their website. I looked into this and found it to be true, even though both of the lodging establishments had been in town well before the winery opened in 2004. The majority of the advertising for lodging on their website was in the Red Wing and Northfield areas. Now, I have to ask, how is that benefiting our local businesses? I feel he's not interest, he's not showing interest in supporting our local community only himself. I even went as far as to reach out to the winery on their Contact Us section of the website, and here's the response I received. I have a couple copies for you to share. My question to the winery on the email was, "Do you not have any local lodging establishments?" And the response from the winery was, "Hi, thanks for thinking of us, but unfortunately, we do not. There will be a hotel coming this summer." At your December 5th council meeting, I think it was the mayor that I heard put in a plug for the winery stating that TripAdvisor lists the winery as the number-two destination spot for people visiting our city. I think it's a shame that the winery in turn has been sending these visitors away from our city for lodging. I know as a small-town business owner in this town, I try to send as much business to the other local businesses as I can. I'm constantly being asked by visitors where to eat, drink, shop, and get gas, and I don't send them to surrounding towns. But if the winery has been directing all these visitors they attract to stay elsewhere for all these years, imagine the business our community has already lost. People will generally eat, shop, and get gas in the city that they are staying. So I can't help but believe that Mr. Stoll has only been interested in benefiting himself, and I would hope that the city would take all this into consideration when making decisions on this project. And if I might add one more thought, our business, along with the other businesses out on the south end of town, are a large tax base for this city, and we've already taken a big hit on those assessments. Then we got robbed from getting a better highway entrance and exit plan when the lights came out, which I feel could have been negotiated better. And then on top of it, we were given this crazy roundabout system with poor signage and no lightage. We have been begging for better signage for two years. A sign on the road behind the south end of the businesses, just directing traffic to our businesses, is something we've been asking for, and while the city is deciding where to spend our money, I hope that this request could be honored also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, I'll look into that signage for you and find out where those signs are, because we'll work with the county and the city to make sure we get the right signs over there.
I'd be happy to talk with whoever with the opinions on what I think would help all the businesses the most.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Babe O'Gorman. There seems to be a lot of support for the winery. I'm all in favor of the winery. I don't know of anybody that I've run into in this area that is not in favor of the winery. I think if, I know that if the winery is gonna substantially increase the city's tax base, that tax incentives are a good thing. I believe that. What I'm dead against is you closing that roadway. And what I don't understand is how you can get two city, two attorney opinions, one from your own city attorney, and yet you still refer to it as an entrance to a parking lot. It was referred to an entrance to the parking lot in the paper as fact, and there are two people here that I am told, and it was shown, that they put it on Facebook as fact. The fact is, it's a road, and I'm dead set against you closing that road. I'm dead set against you selling it to the winery, because it needs to have a traffic analysis, and you need to have a parking analysis. Now, this summer, this body decided that we could not parallel park, because we need more parking downtown. Now you're gonna close 34 spaces, I'm told? Doesn't make sense to me. And I'm glad that earlier that this licensing was brought forth. I don't think the winery's going anywhere. It's one heck of a venue up there. We held my mother's 90th birthday there. It's a wonderful venue. It's a wonderful deal. I've been to like three funerals up there. It needs parking. It needs more handicap parking. I think there's only one spot. Thank you for your time.
Adam Peters, 700 West State Street. This is my third time here to complain about the parking. You guys seem to think that a painted line is gonna stop a full extended cab truck with a full box on both sides of the road, you cannot pass two cars. Not to mention how many people fly through there. What is these little signs and painted lines gonna do when no one enforces anything? No one, hey, wanna make money? Write parking tickets. You know? And the whole article in the paper, all one-sided. It's all one-sided. It's not fair the way you wrote it. It's not fair how, there was a few messages on there, one got deleted, because I asked, "Well, if you bid a dollar, I'll bid two." She goes, "That's not how the city bid agreement works." Well, you know what? I wanna know how to put my name on a city bid agreement, because I'll put an offer on that building. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I too am worried about the parking down there, and I drive a couple days of work for, days a week for public transportation. I haul handicap people and people to where they need to get. Just today, I came out of what I call the roadway by the winery, and I turned east, and I couldn't get down that street. I actually met a police officer that was coming down, so I had to stop, because you can't get through there, two vehicles, especially my bus. My bus is wide enough to car, but still, you should get through there. I've got pictures on my phone. I've stopped one day and took a picture, an extended cab pickup, not only sticking way out, but then it had a bike rack on it with four bikes on it. I seen another pickup parked way up at the end, right in front of the pickup was a sign, "Two-hour parking." That pickup sat there for six hours. You know, all the stuff, I think, you know, like Babe says, I'm not against the winery either, but I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of giving away property for the nothing. And, you know, there's other needs for the city, too. People I haul on the bus, they depend on that. They depend on being able to get to their appointments. And I have a schedule, and I have to try and keep it, and when I have to, every time I go down that Mill Street, I have to stop. Also, I could go out the other way, but have you ever tried to get out of there, when you've got cars coming from the east going west, cars coming the other way, you're trying to look, and just about the time it gets clear, somebody comes flying out of the grocery store? Just twice this week, in two days, I've almost been hit twice there. So that's why I always go out the other way. I'll go, even if I'm heading south of town, I go out, and I turn, and I go east, and then I turn and head south and go through the stoplights, where I don't have to be watching for so much traffic. So, and I voice my concerns about this, too, but, and I realize, you have to do what you have to do, but even one Saturday, I went by there, there was a big tour bus parked on one side, there's the winery side, and there was a tour bus parked on the other side. All the parking spots were taken up with them two tour buses. So, you know, I've been a resident here for 31 years, and paid my taxes every year. I don't pay the kind of taxes that some people pay, but I figure I have the right to voice my opinion, and I thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
Greg Magnussen, 1325 Seventh Street North. I don't, I agree with everything that's been said about the winery, so I won't say anything else. I walk a lot in town, and if you walk, try and walk across the Ninth Street Bridge, one north of the fairgrounds, I call it the Ninth Street Bridge, I'm not sure what it is, in the wintertime, when snowmobiles have been using the sidewalk, you can't walk on the sidewalk. You have to go out and walk in the street. It makes sense to me that if we have a sidewalk, we should use it for people, let the snowmobiles drive out in the street, because it takes a good 60 seconds to walk across that bridge. And some, early in the mornings, when we walk, there's a lot of traffic on that bridge some mornings. And when you have to walk across that bridge for a minute, that's a long time to walk with no place to go, except over the railing. And so I request that the city council do what they can to get that sidewalk open. I have been told that the DNR has some rule on that sidewalk that snowmobiles can, it's part of the snowmobile trail.
I don't know.
Tom, can you check on that under Public Works? Okay, I'll get with, I'll get with the chief, and we'll look into that for you.
Sidewalk open for the winter? It's much safer to walk. Thank you.
Yep. It's a great point, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Well, I'm Steve Gesmi, 813 Park Street West, and I'm kinda disappointed. I had this big speech rehearsed that I've been working on all day, and I'm not gonna be able to use it now, but what I do wanna say, and this is to some other than, not maybe everyone, but please keep an open mind, and don't, don't not listen to people. I know there's a lot of things that we think we should just be falling over backwards for, but think of us that don't get any breaks and pay our fair share. Thank you.
Anybody else wanting to address the council under consent agenda? I mean, under public input?
Hi, my name's Chris Benjamin. I don't have a piece of paper, because this is pretty much spur of the moment. I'm at 29642 Hawkins Court. I actually work at the winery, and just to set your mind at ease, we tell everybody about the hotels, and I don't know about the email, that's not me.
What does it say?
We don't, but anybody who calls, anybody who comes in, where can we stay, where can we eat, where can we shop? We all promote our town. We all love our town, even the people who work there and don't even live here. Everybody is proud of the winery that works there. Everybody is proud of our little town, and they wanna see it grow and be a great little destination for tourists. People come, and they canoe, and they ride the bike trail, and they do all that stuff. They also stop at all, everywhere. And when one organization falls, it's a domino effect in every single town. One restaurant can't make it, then the next one can't. It's a domino effect. It's a give-and-take kind of a thing, and I understand that you don't wanna sell your land for a dollar. Like, I get that. I do get that.
And just about what?
I mean, I get that. Like, I live here, too. I pay taxes. I get it. But on the same point, you can't expect a business to stay the same in a small town, and everything in the world costs more every day. So if they don't grow, where are they gonna go? What are they gonna do? They can't just stay stagnant. That's not how you run a business. Everybody knows that. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sick of the work that only has Northfield and Red Wing. And I don't know all of that.
All right. If there's no one, if there's no one else who wants to, all right, one more.
My name is Toby Jensen. I'm from Northfield, Minnesota, so I'm kind of an outsider. And I just wanna give a little bit of my experience and a couple of things that I've said in regards to the motel, what seems to be an issue. Having 100,000 less people come to your town every year seems like it sure as heck wouldn't help the motel business. I'd rather get 100,000 people in here. If you think for a second, because I've been through this in Northfield, that he won't move his business, that he's somehow landlocked, you're really kidding yourself. So if you lose 100,000 people coming down here, and they're spenders, and they don't come down here anymore, think about how that might impact it. And you know what? This is the rules of the game. Amazon is not gonna come here and put 50,000 jobs in here. You take 'em where you can get 'em. You're talking about giving 50 or 60 grand, and you're probably gonna collect that in taxes within a year or two, anyway. Plus, all the other benefits of the company around, you asked the restaurant dealers here, Ryan and some of the others, it's incredible, their business is up 40%. And if you lose that, you lose that, and if you don't think there's a bunch of small towns of 4,000 begging for this kind of stuff, you are really kidding yourself. Yeah, you call your bluff, and then...
Okay, we're gonna, we're not gonna argue, if you guys, we're not gonna argue out there with everybody tonight, guys.
Yeah, well, I mean, when they move out, then everybody says...
Talk to the council.
How long did they leave?
Yep.
So, I just, and one other final point, we would love to have the winery in Northfield.
Thank you.
100,000 people aren't coming here by the way.
All right. Okay, this time, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, one more, Robby, or...
Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, we will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending December the 15th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the December 5th, 2017 city council meeting. Item C is Resolution 2316 authorizing 2018 city license renewals. Item D is the LELS collective bargaining agreement. Item E is a memorandum of MOA Enhanced Flood Warning System Cooperative Agreement. Item F is the hiring of a full-time paramedic. Item G, Resolution 2317 approving transfer of control over cable franchisee. Item H, Resolution, or Item H Squad Car Replacement. Item I, approved purchase of a Lucas II chest compression system for the ambulance department. Item J, Resolution 2318 accepting a donation of $1,000 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association to the ambulance department. Item K, Resolution 2319 accepting a donation of $3,000 from the VFW to the ambulance department. And Item L, introduction and first reading of ordinance 357, amending Chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code, the zoning ordinance concerning the zoning map and zoning classification for specific property. Are there any items anybody wishes to move off the consent agenda? If not...
A, F, and H.
Okay, Item A will become Item 7E. Which ones, what was the other one?
Yeah, F.
F and H.
H.
Item F will become Item 7F, and H will become Item 7G. Is there any more? Not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items A, F, and H.
So moved.
Motion by Morris, second by Ken. All's in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. That moves us on to council business this evening. First item is Resolution 2320 approving development agreement with George on the Rocks. Is Mr. Maroni here?
He was...
David's here.
Yeah, if you go get him, please. By the way, move on to item eight, 7B will come back to item A. Request to purchase city parcel. Ron?
Thank you. In your packet is a request for, to purchase the first parcel west of the Mill Street Bridge. It's a bare parcel that's owned by the city, adjacent to 633 Sixth Street. There's a memo in your packet from Greg Anderson. Public Works Commission has looked at this parcel before, as far as from the perspective of additional, potential additional parking, and Greg has a memo in there stating that there'd be roughly six to seven stalls, probably at a cost of about $30,000. It's what they could, what he estimates they could get in there for vehicle parking, and plus, he mentions about lighting with the residents next door, headlights. The other item on that property is a well. The property owner, the potential, the potential purchaser, has said that they would seal the well at their expense, and so we're just wondering if you wanna pursue it, if you want us to bring a proposal forward at a future council meeting, or if you're not interested, we will, with the resident, know.
Okay. Anybody got any?
I know this piece of property, and knew about it for a long time, and the one good thing about this is, is that being in water business and stuff like that, that well needs to be addressed over there, whether we sell it or keep it, that needs to be sealed off, because we have learned that things change with these dead wells that we didn't expect. On the other hand, I also look at this property, and I don't know where this winery thing is going, and I looked at the property and thought maybe it would hold 10 or 12 cars, and I guess my... And I guess my question was is if it should be a drop-off point for this bus service, this guy talks about here tonight? Or if we should think about something else? I certainly believe if we put parking up there, we can put up a solid fence and fence that house off so they don't have headlights in their house. So I don't know. I think this would be a nice addition to those people's house. So I don't really have a good answer on it outside of we have a parking problem. We already got land over there. We could add a few stalls. Whether that's enough to help things downtown, I don't know. But that's the only thing I'm thinking about with this piece of property. Just trying to be open-minded about it.
Anybody else?
Regarding the well, the purchaser has agreed to cap that well, correct?
Verbally, correctly.
Okay.
Right. There's nothing in writing. I mean, what he's asking for is would we want to consider selling it? And then having him come back with an offer and a...
One other thing I would say, if they're good enough to buy that and to cap that well both, then we'd have to figure it out later. But I certainly would like to see that money throwed into the sewer and water account to help keep that down. Thank you.
Okay, what's council want to do?
Make a motion to sell it.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion by John, second by Ken. Any further discussion?
Clarify the motion that it would be to direct us to bring back a proposal to you for a future consideration.
Right, yes. Any other discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to, we'll go back to item A, resolution twenty-three twenty approving development agreement with George on the Rocks. Dave?
Thank you. I will need a little assistance with the lights. I'd like to walk through just some of the financing so it's clear to everybody on how this development contract for David Olson or George on the Rocks, Artisan Plaza, former Grandpa's Garage project, really works. David Olson's here tonight too, I see. I'm gonna go through just some of the financial data because it does get a little complicated in terms of following the flow of funds here. But I want the council to understand how this development contract is written and how it will benefit the project and what, how it relates back to the tax income and plan that was approved back in May of this year. We're gonna start the story. Have to take my word for it. I'll show you here. It's two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen property tax statement for what was Grandpa's Garage. And the story really started back in two thousand sixteen when David Olson bought this property for about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and came to the city council the following year with a request for tax increment financing assistance to help facilitate the financing of a substantial redevelopment. And just want to point out to the council that in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, of the total taxes paid, about twenty thousand dollars. Twenty-one thousand in sixteen, about nineteen thousand in two thousand seventeen. Of that total tax, about six thousand dollars a year was city portion only. The balance of the taxes then obviously go to Goodhue County, the school district, and the state of Minnesota. But on about a nineteen thousand dollar tax load in two thousand seventeen, about six thousand dollars finds its way to the city of Cannon Falls. Fast forward to post-reconstruction. And again, these numbers are a little bit tiny. Construction that's occurred on the property this year, we have asked Peggy Treble to come over from Goodhue County and do a preliminary valuation or new valuation for the property post-construction. And what Peggy has identified here is that the value of the property is rising this year as a result of construction a little over a million dollars. Okay? That's tax value. That's not construction or investment value. That's tax value. So this property has been substantially renovated from the point in time which David Olson bought it. But you just saw that I mentioned that in two thousand seventeen, there's about nineteen thousand dollars of taxes paid. The projected property taxes now on the heels of the first initial phase of redevelopment are projected to jump up to about forty-six thousand. Significant increase, okay? The real point I wanted to make was going back to the tax increment financing plan and how this really works. Because this is where things tend to get a little bit confusing. This happens to be the cash flow projection that was included in the tax increment plan that was adopted back in May. Don't get too immersed in all the numbers. But basically what happens is in the plan, we identified that the first year valuation, new valuation on the heels of the construction would be about a million two ninety-five. Peggy's number that I just showed you was a million two seventy-seven. Darn close. Darn close to what was projected in the plan. And of that valuation, remember in tax increment, the current valuation of that property continues to be captured or taxes paid by the existing value between the city, county, and school district. There's about a five thousand dollar tax capacity value. Using the current mill rate, it's about sixty-eight hundred dollars in taxes. And of the sixty-eight hundred dollars in taxes of that base value, about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred roughly would be city portion and the balance would be county and school. Okay? So that remains with the city of Cannon Falls. Going across the spreadsheet then, with a tax rate assumption as per the plan of around a hundred and thirty-two percent and the new valuation created as a result of the development is going to generate a tax increment number of about twenty-one thousand. I just showed you a forty-six thousand dollar number of property taxes paid. What's the difference? The difference is that the tax increment district doesn't capture all of the taxes paid by, in this case, David Olson. The forty-six thousand he will pay is not all captured by the tax increment district because of the statutory limitations, okay? So what the cash flow projection led us to in May of this year was the first year, two thousand nineteen, the first year of actual tax increment. The money that would come in the door and be collected in the tax increment district on a present value basis is about twenty-one thousand dollars. I added to the spreadsheet using the current ratio of county taxes to city taxes to school district taxes on the twenty-one thousand to show that about forty-eight percent of the tax rate is city portion. So of that twenty-one thousand dollar number, about ten thousand dollars is city. About six thousand, sixty-five hundred county and about forty-four hundred school. So again, it gets confusing in tax increment because what David Olson looks at is the forty-six thousand. That's what he's paying, okay? Based on that adjusted value. But in the tax increment side of the ledger, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars future value in two thousand nineteen. And what you may have saw in the development agreement is a four hundred and eleven thousand dollar number down at the bottom of this spreadsheet. That four hundred and eleven thousand dollars is a present value calculation of the projected tax increment stream over the life of this building. Now, what we don't know is... What I do know is David Olson's gonna keep spending money on the building and the value's gonna keep going up. That's what he's showing me. But we don't know how much each year. We don't know when there's four, or five, or six, or seven tenants out there. There's gonna be improvements within the interior of the building. That's gonna add additional value. And the value of the property's gonna go up over time. Whether it's consistent with the adjustments and the projections that the tax increment plan made, it remains to be seen. But under the assumptions made in the tax increment plan over the life of the district, about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars principal value would be available for recapture, for repayment, for reimbursement to David Olson under this proposed development agreement. That's the point I wanted to make, to at least make sure that everybody kind of understands how tax increment financing works. And then in a legal contract, the development agreement that's before you tonight, what would happen is that up to the four hundred and eleven thousand dollar level, David Olson, as long as he remains owner of that building, would be rebated each and every year through the life of the tax increment district up to that amount. If it happens in the twenty-fifth year, and I know there was concerns about that when the plan was adopted. If it doesn't happen till the twenty-fifth year and the development agreement gets adopted as it's shown, it's a twenty-five-year development agreement. If it happens in year twenty, it's a twenty-year agreement. If it happens in year eighteen, it's an eighteen-year agreement. But there will be payments made each and every year through the life of this contract to reimburse David Olson up to that maximum amount, depending on what the number is. And the contract specifies the terms and conditions of that reimbursement, when it's gonna be made, how it's gonna be made, to what amount it's gonna be made to, what happens if the ownership of the building changes. All those things are covered in the contract that Mary Yipple at Briggs and Morgan has drafted. So that's kind of how the cash flow works. And then the development contract, again, it's a pay-as-you-go note. Pay-as-you-go note means that he pays the taxes to Red Wing, Goodhue County. Goodhue County sends the money back over here. And twice a year, there's a rebate of those taxes paid, taxes received by Goodhue County, taxes paid at the city of Cannon Falls. There becomes a rebate twice a year of those taxes paid, consistent with the contract. If taxes aren't paid, no reimbursement. Okay? So that's kind of in a nutshell how the development contract works, how the tax increment plan authorized, you know, the reimbursement through this program. I won't speak at all about the project. I'll let David Olson, if you've got any questions, you know, for him about the project. But what I will tell you is the redevelopment district that was created back in May, remember we talked about David Olson having to do certain things in that building to correct the bad conditions that allowed the district to be created in the first place? That's been done. Quite, quite, that's been done. So we're good to go in terms of meeting the requirements under the tax increment financing plan with what Mr. Olson has done. And if the council's willing to go ahead with the development agreement, that would be a contractual relationship between the city of Cannon Falls and David Olson. If there's any questions in that agreement, I'll try to answer those as well. But I don't know if I've missed anything or anything else you want to add at this point?
David Olson here. You know, when I started with the project at Grandpa's Garage, it was literally a shell. The windows were bad, the insulation was bad, the roof was leaking. And, you know, there was really two options. Either you tear the building down or you reconstruct. And I decided to reconstruct. With some of this TIF financing, you know, I guess really the simplest way to look at it is if the building was demolished and was a bare lot, what's the value of it? Is it thirty-five? Is it fifty thousand dollars? What is it? But by revamping this building, we're up in the million-dollar range. And even if you get a portion of a million dollars, it's much better than a thirty or a fifty thousand dollar tax basis. This is the way I look at this thing. Part of my vision and my dream that we're doing with this project also is to vitalize the south side of Cannon Falls. And I shouldn't say the south side of Cannon Falls, all of Cannon Falls. We've got two tenants that are in our building already that are open. And it's pretty amazing the amount of traffic that we're running through our property already. We really don't have any signage. There's a lot of people that are coming off of fifty-two because they're intrigued by the building. And that's good that we've got to that point. And we gotta keep moving in that direction so we bring people to town because they do come to our place and then they go to McDonald's or the restaurants or the winery or whatever. And like somebody else mentioned, this is really a group effort between everybody in the city to make this city successful. So, do you have any questions?
I'd just like to say, I mean, the work that, and what you put into the building is amazing compared to what it was. You know, just the white tin shell out there. I've been out there and we took Congressman Lewis out to see the project and he was pretty impressed with what you guys are doing and really looks good. I mean, it's come a long way even since he was there. So thank you for doing that. And it really does, it changes the whole perception of that part of town, so.
Absolutely.
Looks good.
Yep.
Thank you.
I've been amazed.
I just want to say that a special thank you, not just this building, but your trucking company and all the other things you've done. Thank you for investing in Cannon Falls. Thank you for making chicken salad out of, I'll tell you, chicken you-know-what. So we appreciate your efforts when people come into town and work with us like that and want to wish you the best and thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Mike and a second by Ken to approve. And where's the resolution?
Twenty-two seventy-seven.
Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven, or twenty-three twenty.
Twenty-three twenty.
To approve the development agreement for George on the Rocks LLC. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, that moves us on to item seven D, resolution twenty-three twenty-one, East Side Two. We are, the Cannon River Winery expansion request, that time will be tabled as there is nothing to discuss.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. What I brought with tonight was the feasibility report the council ordered last month for the East Side Two project. And tonight, I will present the report, answer any questions the council has. And if the council wants to move forward with the improvements, the resolution in your packet orders the improvement hearing, which is the next step in the four-twenty-nine process for your second meeting in January. And at that meeting, I'll again present the report. We'll open it up to take comments from the public. And after that, you'll decide to move forward with the project at that point. So that's kind of the lay of the land as far as the project goes right now. Okay, in two thousand nine, the city authorized capital improvement plan be prepared. And that plan was prepared. We inventoried all the sewer and water and storm in the city. Also did a pavement management rating of all the pavement in town. Excuse me. And the plan came up with six major reconstruct projects, laid them out in a schedule. And the city so far has completed West Side One, East Side One, West Side Two, north of nineteen. We still have the Park Avenue area down here to do. And now the project before you now is East Side Two, which is generally Minnesota Street from Second all the way to the high school, Mill Street off of Grove, and then the corresponding side streets around the park that weren't completed in two thousand thirteen with the East Side Two project. So the project area, like we discussed, is residential for the most part. It's got older sanitary sewer and water main. Most of the sanitary sewer is clay pipe. Most of the water main is cast iron, four-inch and six-inch in size. Most of the mains are sized appropriately for the neighborhoods and what it serves. The neighborhood's fully built out. There is a little bit of storm sewer in the area, but not a lot. There is some in Grove Street and in Almond. Find that map for you. Yeah, so the existing storm sewer in the area is in Minnesota, down here at the west end, down by Second. And then we have some storm sewer on the far east end in Almond and in Grove. And that storm sewer flows north. In the two thousand thirteen project or the East Side One, that project extended sanitary sewer up Bridge Street to Minnesota and also up Cedar to Minnesota to pick up surface water and the neighborhoods up in the East Side Two area that did not have storm sewer. Right now, at Cedar and at State through Highway nineteen, there's a storm sewer pipe that collects water on the highway but then discharges it right on the street on Cedar and it runs over land a couple of blocks before it gets back into storm sewer system. We have the same situation at Vine Street by the park. We have an open storm sewer pipe that runs over land for a block or two. We have an open storm sewer pipe that runs over land for a block or two before it gets back into the storm sewer system. So this, these improvements in the blue line shown on the plan, on the figure, show where we anticipate storm improvements as part of this project. Figure six shows the sewer and water improvements as well as the street. So again, we'd be looking at Minnesota Street all the way from Second, excuse me, to the high school. Cedar Street has some water and sewer in it. Bridge Street was completed both in 2013 and also back in 2001. A portion of Bridge Street was done. There is some water and sewer in the alleys between Cedar and Oak, and also between Vine and Almond. And we've got sewer and water in Grove, and a little bit of sewer in Almond Street. We show the one block of Mill Street from Grove Street back west up the hill is included in this project as well, because that is the last piece of old infrastructure out there beyond the rest of East Side Two. So the street improvements area is represented on figure four here. Here we go. So the red shows all the streets that would be reconstructed. That'd be new, pavement would come out, curb and gutter would come out, and we put in new pavement, new curb and gutter. The blue area is a mill and overlay area in past project the city has included. Some blocks in the near, in the vicinity of the project, just as a mill and overlay, since the pavement's bad, we're going to be doing new pavement work in the area. We bid it as an alternate, we bid it as part of the project and assessed it, just to get the work done. We've got a larger volume happening, probably realized a little better price for the additional work that's adjacent to the project. All the highlighted parcels you see would be the benefiting parcels, and they are represented in the preliminary assessment roll at the back of the report. And you can see the side streets of Cedar. We've got the little stub of 19, and then the little stub north of Oak that wasn't touched as part of the 13 project. Okay, moving on to the improvements. We talked about the water and sewer that would get replaced. We placed all the sanitaria with new PVC sewer, precast manholes, replaced the services from the main back to the property line. The water main, we would replace with eight-inch pipe, six or eight, depending on which street we're in, and replace new services from the main back to the property line. In the 2016 project, West Side Two, the city at that point let property owners specially assess the replacement of their lines on their property. That may be something we might want to consider, because it's not uncommon in these projects to find shared service lines, where two houses use one service line out to the street. As part of these improvements, we put a dedicated service, water and sewer to each lot as we go by. If they didn't have one, notify the property owner. We had a couple of those instances on the west side. A couple of them took advantage of that and separated their services, a couple didn't. We also have the potential of lead service, that again, replacing that lead from the shut-off all the way into the house could be an assessed cost, meaning the resident would have to line up the contractor to do the work, but they wouldn't have to front the entire bill. The council at that time let them assess that along with their assessment for the project, thereby they were able to get that work done without incurring that entire cost. Just something for the city, the council to consider moving these improvements forward. Water main, we've talked back and forth, both at Public Works and at council on water main material. The city standard typically has been ductile iron pipe. We did do the West Side One project in 13, which was Water Street and the streets up in the northeast corner. We did use PVC water main at that time. We bid it both ways. We realized savings using the PVC water main, and the council at that time moved ahead with PVC. If that's the council's direction, wish tonight we could include that in the design documents. At this point, it doesn't make a big difference, it's just a consideration. When we get to moving ahead with the plans, if the council does, you know, that would be a direction we'd take at that point from the council, moving ahead. Just on a note, I serve six cities as city engineer. One of those six used PVC as their water main standard. Other cities I work with around the metro, it's about a 50-50 mix. A lot of contractors will say it's about a 50-50 ductile water main to PVC water main, kind of a preference feel. The biggest difference would be the locating technology needed. When the PVC water main goes in, we'd have to put in a copper tracer wire with it, bring it up at each hydrant for test stations. We've done that with the 13 project. We can include those requirements with this project if the council desires. Storm sewer improvements, we talked a little bit about that, bringing the storm sewer up on Vine and on Cedar to pick up those open discharge points by 19, and also drain most of the intersections that currently don't have storm sewer in them. A lot of them probably have the water sit there for a while, don't efficiently drain to the next block or down to the nearest storm sewer on Minnesota. You know, it results in some ponding, results in some pavement failures and potholes and stuff like that. Street width, the city standard is 32 feet in a residential area. Most of these streets are 32 now, with the exception of Minnesota. Minnesota's about 38 feet. And Minnesota is a busy street, as anybody that lives on it knows, or anybody uses it, both from people bypassing and not driving on 19, people leaving or coming to school, even the parade route. 32 can be narrow when there's a lot of on-street parking, something the council might want to consider. Do we just put Minnesota Street back at 38 to protect that additional width because of the traffic? Move it in a couple feet to 36, or go to 32? Decision again, not need to be made tonight. The thought on my end would be, given the traffic and the use, maybe we want to look at that maintaining its width or close to its current width, just because of the use we see on that street. Oak Street, right now, Oak Street is 32 feet at Minnesota, but by the time you get to Water, it's 20 feet. It's awful narrow. Again, we would widen it out to 32. That's going to change a couple of yards there, especially on the east side of Oak Street. We had that situation over on Floyd on the west side. You know, it made a big difference, adding that 12 feet to the street. Again, that could be a council decision, do we maybe keep the width on Oak as we move into the final design? Something to think. The rest of them are about 32, so most of them would go back in about what they are now. People that live on Cedar, on the block of Cedar that's not done, could look to the north and see the block that's done, and, you know, kind of imagine what Cedar's going to look like when that last block is done. Again, Vine, Almond, and Grove would pretty much go back in the way they are. I mentioned, excuse me, the blue area as a potential mill and overlay project. At this point, I've got it in there, I've got the costs in there, I've got it assessed that way. Again, after I get done speaking, I'll stand for questions, and if you want to move forward and set the hearing, we can include it in there, we can take it out. Just wanted to look at everything outstanding on this side of the town to include in this last project. And then one other note would be these alleys here, between, kind of by the park, you know, Cedar to Oak, and again, Vine to Grove. We've got sewer and water in them now. Some of the houses that front 19 use those mains, some of them don't. I've included all of them in the project at this point. Again, if we want to back off and not do all of it, we can. At least it's in there for this point, because we don't know which houses go out to the water in the front or the sewer in the back, and really won't know until we dig it up and do the project. So, jumping down to the favorite part, the costs. On page seven, we've got a street project cost of 2.2. We've got storm sewer of 460,000, sanitary at 730, water main at 575, and the overlay at 228, for a total of 4.2. Now, most of you are going to say, well, when we talked about this project, it was $2.5 million. Well, we didn't include that overlay project. We didn't have the alleys in there at that time. So those pieces, along with the section of Mill Street out here, could be backed out, and that gets us down to about a $3 million project. And also along that lines, following the assessment policy the city has done, assessing 20% of the project to the benefiting parcels, most of them out there residential. The few industrial ones, we've applied what, how many residential lots would fit, given the zoning in that part of the top, part of the city to it, to come up with a colliviant unit for those. So right now, we're looking at about 106 parcels in the reconstruct area. And the reconstruct cost is about 4 million. 20% of that is 800,000. And assessing that 106 over the 800,000 comes up to about a $7,550 per unit assessment, $7,550 on the reconstruct. The mill and overlay stretch, basically Grove Street, 20% of those improvements is about 45,000, 46,000. Assessing that over the 27 parcels that that benefits is about $1,688 a parcel, so about 1,700 a parcel for the mill and overlay. To give you some perspective, in 2013, East Side One, at the report phase, we had reconstruct assessments at 6,400. When we finished the project, the assessments were 4,900 when we got done. Basically, you know, that time we got the bid costs, we got the construction costs, we tried to be conservative. West Side Two, which was 2016, in the report, we had an estimated assessment of 7,343. Those came in at $5,500 when we had construction all said and done. So, we seem to be tracking with the report costs, you know, given the bidding climate moving forward, we get good bids. I would anticipate those assessments to be lower when we get everything done. I think I covered everything on my list.
Couple things, Greg.
Yes?
The one thing, and I just want to make sure I'm clear about that, we no longer can leave lead lines. And I also feel it's a total health issue for the town. So whether the city furnishes 50% of it, replaces lead lines, I would like to see in this project that they're done. It has to be a part of the project. The other thing is, there's other ways out there now, and I just kind of want to get your input. What is this system now where they take the existing mains that are in there and spray them on the plastic liner inside? And supposedly you do it all from the inside? Is this something that's still, I know when it came out, it was really high-priced?
Are you talking the water or the sewer mains?
I believe it was both.
Okay. The sanitary sewer, they call it slip lining, or applying a cast-and-place liner. We did that on Sixth Street, on the East Side Two, or West Side Two project, because Sixth Street had very simply been overlaid. So we pulled a liner inside there, heated it up with steam, it cured to the inside of the pipe, we went back, drilled out the openings for the services, and didn't have to do the restoration. That is also available to be done in water. It's more costly to do in water, because there's fewer contractors that do it, because you've got to have, I mean, it's potable water. Where the sewer, it's a little different, you can be a little, you know, less careful with your equipment. The beauty of doing that is when you can't dig up the surface above the pipe. If you've got a highway, if you've got a newly constructed street, if you've got a railroad, then it becomes cost-effective. When the street above the main needs replacement, doing it as a trenchless, doing it from the inside is not going to be, is not going to be cost-effective, unless for some reason the pipe is significantly deep, or there's other obstacles of open cut and replacing it. Here, most of the mains are relatively deep, or, excuse me, shallow, 13 feet or less. Most of the streets, as we identified in the capital plan in 2009, you know, we kind of coupled these, the water and sewer replacement with the street replacement, so we do it as a package project. If this was Highway 20 or Highway 19, we couldn't dig it up, we'd definitely be looking at some trenchless options. But here, where we have streets that probably need replacement anyway, we need to add storm sewer to some of these blocks, it's just not going to be cost-effective.
The other question I'd have for you, Greg, is we have the sagging streets and the stuff up on top of the hill there that we talked about have to be repaired. Should that be included in this project right now? And also, where are we at with Sandstone Ridge? If we get to that, is that going to be a lot of expense for the city? Or are we going to be in a position, we spent this four or five millions, now we need to wait with that? When I look at the whole overall picture, I certainly want that Minnesota Street stuff done. I certainly want even an extra two feet. But I'm just thinking about the whole overall picture with what we've got out there. Is this good timing to do this? And I also would comment that I was quite shocked, the way prices are going up, that you're still around 6, 7,000 assessments. Because I was expecting that to jump quite a bit, just because of the demand and the projects that are going on, so.
Well, we've seen, we've been using recent bid prices. And in Cannon Falls, I think we benefit especially on paving, being close enough to the metro to get a lot of paving contractors interested. If we were another 40 miles south, we wouldn't have the paving competition we have here, just because of so many paving operators are located in Rosemont, excuse me, and where this is close enough to make. And that's a big cost of this project, is the pavement, when you start adding up all the square foot of street we're replacing, that and the curb and the pipe. So, we used bid prices we saw last year, add a little bit of contingency like we've done, and you can see from the past proposed assessment and final assessment numbers on our reports, we seem to be tracking within the same ballpark for this type of project.
The other thing I would point out is that I did get complaints about the dirt that was put back, and it didn't want to grow sod. And with all our compost down there, I would like the next project to be more aware of if we have put some of our compost on there to get better sodding and grass. I think we should make sure to keep that in mind.
We could include a more compost-rich topsoil mix, and maybe even offer the compost from the city to whoever the contractor is, and try to get more nutrients in that topsoil. And that restoration thing is always a struggle, especially down here in the sand, is the sod, it looks great right away. And then for several years, it takes a while to catch up. A lot of cities have switched to hydro seeding. It takes about a month to get it green, but in the long run, you get a better material because the seed has to grow roots in place, doesn't grow somewhere else, get cut and shipped here. So, again, that's a design question we don't need answered tonight. But I am aware of the issues we've had with sod in the past, and I think that compost is either including, requiring a compost-rich topsoil to be used for the import, and maybe if the quantity exists, offering some from the city is a possibility.
Greg, I have two things, kind of specific too, if that's okay. For starters, Minnesota Street trees should be okay unless we have issues getting from the main to the houses.
If the street width stays the same or even narrows, the boulevard trees are fine with respect to the street. Where the issue is when we lose trees is when the water and service lines are replaced each house. It's not uncommon that every other house, that water shut-off is right next to a nice big maple or an oak tree, and we have to take it out. So, the trees, though, it's a beautiful street with the trees. If we keep the width the same, or even creeping in a foot or two on each side, the trees will be fine. It's going to be where the water and service stubs go to each house. There, we don't have much control over it. But we would replace them, it's just not going to be the same.
You can curve those lines, right?
We can, but Public Works does not like that, and it doesn't always the best for service performance.
Second thing, at the intersection of Minnesota and Vine, every time it rains, we get a heavy snow, whatever, that intersection to the south, between the park and the other house, fills up with water, and it turns into a big skating rink. What's going to be done to alleviate, I mean, how will that be alleviated?
We will be adding more catch basins on the south side of Minnesota. And then also, if you look down by the booster station building there at the park, there's a PVC pipe sticking out of the ground. Well, that's runoff from 19 that runs right down to the lower, to the flat area of Vine. We'll have catch basins at the south side of Minnesota at Vine, and we'll also run up and get that pipe and keep it in a pipe, so it isn't running across the surface.
Anything else?
I'd actually like to see Minnesota Street stay 38. And if there's a big price difference, I'd like to see PVC used too, if it helps the project. And all the side streets, keep them at 32. I don't want them any narrower than that, I don't think.
I think for safety's sake, we need to keep Minnesota at 38 and all the others at 32, because it's, again, it's just a safety issue and...
That one on Oak, though, I mean, from Minnesota down to Water, I mean, there's three houses that basically use that. So, I mean, even if that stayed pretty close to the same, I mean, I don't think there would be that big of an issue on that one.
And I'd include the PVC as an option, just to see where bids come in.
I don't think we've had any problems with it, I mean, since we put it in. And I know a lot of places that are doing it, so I think it's a real good option, because I think it'll last longer.
Steel pipe, you have iron bacteria. You can still get iron bacteria with PVC, but it is less. And I just want to point that out too. So it's not only a durability issue, it's also a bacteria issue. And the water main stuff we do today is so amazing to me how we always just do it with K copper, heavy copper. I mean, you could hook a truck up to it, you were going to pull it apart, and now everything is going to plastic. So, just be open about the PVC, that's all I'm saying.
All right, nobody else has anything else? We'll take a motion to forge ahead with the, or accept the feasibility report, and call for the improvement hearing on January the 16th.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by John. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Carries.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. All right, that moves us on to item seven E, which is item seven A from the consent agenda. And you had that?
Yeah, I just was checking through the...
Yeah, I just was checking through the expenditures, and I kind of harp on this every other month, but I'd like to see, as much possible, again, bought locally, and we're trying to support our businesses in town, and anything you can help in that regard. It looked like a month, there was a lot of credit cards on there, again, from US Bank, but it's, it's improving, so it's better. That's all I got on that.
Councilmember Althoff, could you help us? A lot of our purchases within the police department are by credit card, especially for trainings and when...
Yeah, I'll go through that, I'll stop down with that.
But, you know, if you want to, want to go through, I looked at mine, I mean, we had a, a purchase for a clock, for instance, that was at the Dollar Store here in town. They changed over staff, and they didn't know how to charge it to the city, so we used a credit card for that purchase.
I'll stop down and go through.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else? If not, Chair, take a motion to approve the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December the fifteenth, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Second by, motion by Morris, second by Ken. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carries. That moves us on to item seven F, which was the hiring of a full-time paramedic.
I was just going to ask Tim, because he's here tonight, I know he authorized this a couple of months ago, to hire, hire the full-time. I was just kind of curious, how many part-time and full-time do you have down there now? I'm not complaining, you're, you're a revenue producer down there, as opposed to a lot of them, but I'm just kind of curious.
Currently, we have five, this will be the sixth employee that'd be full-time, and then we have about twenty-four active, or twenty-four volunteers per se on the schedule.
Just curious. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Chair, take a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time paramedic.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Morris. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carries. That moves us on to item six H, which is the squad car replacement.
I, I just kind of curious, I, I appreciate, you know, you're, you're budgeting this in, and kind of the way you kind of scheduled it, but I just thought maybe we could delay it a year, is that a possibility? I know we, we just got a fire truck and a few other things that...
We, we certainly could, it's probably going to cost us about half the price of a new car in maintenance. This one is starting to nickel and dime us, and when we get above ninety thousand miles, that's what happens. You may not recall, when I came here, I inherited a fleet where our lowest mileage vehicle was about a hundred-and-five thousand. We spent over twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, I believe, keeping them running between when I got authorization to order squads and when the new ones came in. Keeping them past ninety thousand starts to really just kill us in the, the cost. Couple of years ago, we exceeded our operational budget for repairs by over, I know it was easily over double, just because of the, the cost of keeping them that long. I realize that the, you spend money on a fire truck, but our trucks, our vehicles got to get replaced a lot faster than, you know, a fire truck does.
Well, I've talked to you before, you've got a lot of squads, do you need all the squads you've got?
We have three that are our primary mark vehicles, this is one of those three. The other vehicles are, we have a volunteer vehicle, and then we have two administrative vehicles, and at times, we have almost all of them in use. We don't keep them there for, for just every day, we keep them there for the days we need them, just like the fire department with their equipment.
How many miles a year do you put on them?
It varies, what we see is about, Joe's in here, I think it's about...
Two-hundred a month.
Yeah.
About twenty-five thousand a year roughly?
Yeah, it depends. When we're down a person, it holds it off. When we're fully staffed, the miles roll up faster. Feeling fully staffed is a good problem, but, you know, the, the reverse of that is that the miles go up more.
Well, it's amazing today with cars, when I bought my first one, you could get a heck of a deal on it if they had over forty thousand on them, because they were wore out, and now we got cars that go a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred thousand like a darn. So, I realize things are changing. We did replace one squad, squad car here not too long ago, that we...
We, we've purchased a squad last year and the year before.
Okay.
We kept those for five years. Again, we saw pretty significant costs in, in doing so, which is why I've recommended that we look at a four-year scheduled replacement, and we're evaluate as we, we hit that fourth year. If we can squeeze another year out of it, we certainly will. If it's been costing us a lot of money, my recommendation is to sell it, replace it and get rid of it. We get them on state contract, significantly less than somebody could go out and buy it, and at the same time, when we get rid of them, you know, there's, there's that potential coming back to offset some of that cost.
Are they doing any better job of warranting police cars compared to regular cars, or what is the normal warranty on a police car?
We get the ba, same basic warranty. We can purchase an extended warranty, but when I've looked at the numbers, it hasn't made sense. You know, I mean, honestly, when we get a squad car that gets over about ninety thousand, the front ends are starting to wear on them. You know, the, the way that we drive them is significantly different than the way that I drive my personal car.
Well, yeah.
Lots of starts, stops, turns, you know, it's great, after we sell them, somebody wants to put them into a taxi business and replace the entire front end. For us, it's very costly when we have to do that, those bills usually run us thousands of dollars.
Jeff, has the, have you seen anything, as far as, I know we do, we've been getting the Ford interceptors, are there other vehicles out there, the, even police vehicles out there, that are different, that it might be getting a little, not as much maintenance been done on them? You know, the Chargers, for instance, I mean, are they holding up better for maintenance purposes than, than the Fords?
Now, talking with my peers in, in other agencies, you know, squads, squads take all about the same abuse regardless of the, the city that they're in. The other big factor for us is just the, the shoulder room, we've got some people that are, are rather broad in the shoulders. We looked at the Chargers and, and even the sedans, and they just don't have that same space. I mean, this is their office, they spend, you know, a twelve-hour shift, they probably spend eight hours of it in it. I mean, Joe's, you know, closer to having done that than I have, and, and maybe he could, he could speak to that, but, you know, we give them, give them the right tools to do their job, and it's much easier for them to do it.
I just look at the maintenance on it to see if, you know, if we've got a better, a different vehicle that might give us a little bit better maintenance cost.
These have been very good vehicles, as far as maintenance goes, I mean, we, we end up replacing brakes, you know, tie rods, that type of stuff, those are just routine things. What kills us is when we get above that, about ninety thousand miles, and I caution, you know, console, when we made the decision we were going to go to five years, that's a possible outcome. When we, we get above that, that's when they start nickel and diming us, and they ain't nickels and dimes that those bills come in at.
Okay, and if we order this one this year in 2017, I mean, if we order it now, how much is that going to save us, I mean, if we went and saved it and didn't order it till June?
It's not going to save any difference. What'll happen is, we'll keep the, the one that's in service right now at a hundred-and-two, almost a hundred-and-three thousand, and we'll roll, I think as Joe said, about twenty-two to twenty-five hundred miles per month, so six months, another twelve thousand miles onto it, and I have no idea what the, it's going to cost us in the interim.
Just wondering.
Well, the only reason I brought up the number of squads is because you've got more cars, you've got more maintenance, and maintenance is at the costly end of it, I guess.
Right. Any further discussion? If not, Chair, take a motion to approve the purchase of a 2018 squad from the state vendor contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Mike. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carries. All right, that moves us on to reports.
I do have one item, Dakota County is studying doing some improvements on eighty-eight in 2020, from Randolph to fifty-two, and they're having, they should be putting a press release in the paper for an open house on the eleventh at Randolph High School. They're not coming across fifty-two, the limits of the study are fifty-two back to Randolph. This is FYI.
Sam?
I would just like to publicly thank Northfield Hospital and Clinics, they sent a EMS supervisor over to help with the interviews, and Illini Health also did the same, so we had an unbiased panel, and we did our internal interviews, and thank you to the Fire Department Relief Association and the VFW for their cash donations, so we could purchase our third Lucas.
Tom?
I'd just like to say we almost had the ice cream, last Friday, we lost a couple of people, but hopefully we can get it in the circle and have a good steel wash.
That's it.
Um, well, we are getting a rubbery assistant, January second. Yay! That's it.
Okay. Chief?
Just a reminder, we're in the middle of a towards-zero-death wave right now, it's focusing on impaired driving. If you're going out for an evening, or just to go out drinking, please don't drive, make arrangements to have somebody be a safer, sober driver for you, take a cab, walk, whatever it is, just don't go behind the wheel. And everybody enjoy the, the holidays, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
And Jeff, I would like to add on to that, if all else fails, and you can't get a hold on to anybody, call the police and say, I don't want to be arrested, give me help to get home. Thank you.
Ron?
I just want to say thank you to council and staff for a really busy, challenging year, but it was, it's quite a year with, obviously, as you saw, after three-quarters, eight million dollars of building permits and more since that time, but get good people that work for the city, and I think you guys are good decision-makers, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. What else? Mike?
Nothing.
Cedar?
I, you have to say, I'm disappointed that we were not able to move the ball tonight with respect to the winery. I'm disappointed in, in us, and I just have to say it, that's all. Thanks, I hope we, we live to fight another day.
Tom?
Planning Commission met last week, and that nine acres east of John Deere was rezoned to be two.
Leroy?
Just one thing, we had our year-end, or kind of our last meeting at the library, glad to see Nicole's here tonight. We've got a gal named Mary Harkins that's been with us for years on the board, she is a great gal, did all our recordings at our meetings, and because of our rules, you can only be on there six years, so we're going to lose her, and I just want to say a special thank you for all the commitment she made to that library. Also, to report to the council that we did our year-end on the budget and stuff, and that everything at the library is really in good shape, and there's a good reserve, and things between Nicole and Justin are doing a great job for us, and the library's on a good track right now. The only thing, it will be nice when we get our water and ice property taken care of. Thank you.
Ken?
Well, we, I talked with everybody on the park board, and we're going to come back on January fourth and resume our meetings.
Good, thanks. Ron?
I'd just like to say, thanks to everybody for, for another good year. I mean, when we're up here, it's, there's a lot of difficult decisions that have to be made. When you run for office, you leave yourself open for a lot of different things, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. We, we signed up for this, so we try to make the best decisions we can, we try to be as impartial as we can, we try to do the best we can. We'll continue to try to move forward to, to see if we can get anything done with the winery. We'll do what we can still do. I would like to say thanks to the council for all your hard work this year, the staff for all your hard work. It takes all of you guys, all the staff, to really make the city go, and we really appreciate it, and let your employees know, not just the department head, but let them know that they do a great job of keeping the city moving, the water running, the toilets flushing, they, they really do a good job keeping the streets clean. Also like to say thank you to everyone that participated in Toys for Tots this year, the library did a great job, had a lot of toys that I picked up there, took over to Red Wing for, to be dispersed for kids at Christmas, so hopefully we have kids that are able to get what they want under the tree when, when Santa Claus comes. And other than that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and we'll see you next year. And with that, Chair, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.